So keep watching. DN News, Liberia, Allan TV. The name is George Cooper. Coming to your live from the John Chymas. The Honorable House of Representatives. Majority Block are now in the John Chymas. Any moment for now, they will be starting section. So these are the lawmakers of the Majority Block. So you can see, um, reaching number 11. Please see that. Security are moving up and down. Making sure that, um, this session will not be disrupt. They are locking, checking on all the doors. Keep watching. This is DN News coming to your live from the John Chymas. Of the House of Representatives. Men are deployed in every corner of this building. To avoid any tension. So the, uh, Samia Kruger is also in the building. So keep watching. This is DN News, Allan Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala had just arrived. Uh, he's been escorted to his seat. By security personnel. So here come Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala. Beating his colleagues. Tell you. He's hawking his colleagues. Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala had just arrived in the John Chymas. Of the House of Representatives. He's beating his colleagues. Been heavily guarded by security personnel. He's now being escorted to his seat. Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala is escorted to his seat.
Here comes the Deputy Speaker.
Okay. He's now taking his seat. Okay. So we stay here from the John Chymas. Of the Honorable House of Representatives. Okay, Clarence Ga from District Number Five, Maghribi County. Had just arrived. And he's now taking his seat. Prince To from District Eight, Mosarala County. Greeting the Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala. So Clarence Ga is the co-presiding. Sitting right next to the Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala. Prince To, District Eight, Longlegon. So you can see the Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala. And co-presiding Clarence Ga. They are having tete-a-tete with their colleagues. His Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala have been presented the agenda for today's section. Uh, he's going through the agenda. Along with his co-presiding. Alpha John from Maghribi County. He's in a tete-a-tete with the Deputy Speaker. Alpha John come from Maghribi. Um, he's in a tete-a-tete with the Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala. Thomas Fala wear dress up in a blue coat suit. Brown leotard with a white long slouch. He's been greeted also by Seku Kana. District Two, Mosarala County. Alongside Representative Alpha John Maghribi. They are in tete-a-tete with the Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala. So keep watching. Keep sharing. The life, um, that is. Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala knocking the cabal. Session called to order by Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala. Presiding Officer of the Majority Block. Sarge in your arm have been instructed to call the section to order. By Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala, Presiding Officer of the Majority Block.
Good morning, Honorable Deputy Speaker. Honorable Co-Presiding Officer, My Disputed Honorable Ladies and Gentlemen of the Honorable House of Representatives. I do honour this time to announce to you the 98th of the 10th quarter of the Honorable House of Representatives. That is the first session of the 55th best speed of the Republic of Liberia. And now, careful. This session is hereby called to order. And it is hereby so-called.
This session be called to order by the Chief Clerk.
Amen.
The Chaplain.
You have the Bible. I want you to repeat First Samuel. Chapter 13, verse 14. I shall speak to you on the subject that may after God's heart. But now your kingdom shall not continue. The Lord has sought him a man after his own heart. And the Lord has commanded him to be captain over his people. Because you have not kept the wish the Lord commanded you. Amen. The Presiding Officer? Who preside and members of this house? Leadership comes from God. We do not fight for it. When God has destined you to be a leader. No one who rises up against you will succeed. Because leadership comes from God. And this was the case. Of Dili. Dili was anointed by God from his youthful days. So tried so many times to kill Dili, he could not. Dili went through tempests of time. And yet people could not prevail against Dili. And this is what God is telling him now. That Dili is the man after my heart. It doesn't mean that when God has chosen somebody who is after his heart. It means that person is so, uh, pious. That person possesses, the world reckons you. Dili was bad. We know what Dili did in the Bible. When God has destined you. The people will see the leadership ability in you. When God has destined you. People will know who you are and you yourself will feel it in a calling. That God has called me to lead these people. But when you see losses arising. When you see ups and downs. Ask yourself. Have I been destined by God to lead these people? Because leadership will not fight for it. People will fight for you to be a leader. May God bless you and let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another moment of session. We pray, Lord, that you take control of this session. And you preside through the Presiding Officer. And you lead through the rest of the representatives. Thank you, Lord, for this session. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
As the Chaplain. The Honorable House of Representatives.
Honourable members of the House of Representatives and the faithful friends of the Republic of Liberia. Honourable Councilor James Romanti Kofa Speaker, Honourable House of Representatives, Republic of Liberia. And Thomas P. Fala Deputy Speaker, Honourable House of Representatives, Republic of Liberia. Mosarala County. Oyakupri, Oyakupri, Oki Baru. Sylwes Allen. Smokey Mamba. Honourable Anthony Marcus and Thomas. Bessilia A. Cooper. Honourable Reverend of the Samuel Aaron Enders. Honourable Imad Werdan. Honourable Prince A. Thor. Fransa Foco Torian. Oyakaywa Kalua. Oyakaywa Abukomu. Oyakaywa Kalua Iwabo. Oyakaywa Papu Flombo. Oyakaywa Papan Kamara. Oyakaywa Papan Kamara. Oyakaywa Kesein, Klaoui Sibo. Oyakaywa Benablu, Bense Torian. Grand Bassel County. Oyakaywa Ace Ki Bani. Oyakaywa Klaoui Tense. Oyakaywa Mati Bo. Oyakaywa Afre E. Flombo. Oyakaywa Tomos E. Goswari Second. Sanio County. Oyakaywa Thomas, Thomas Robio Piyod. Oyakaywa Sanse E. Tuyuwaya. Oyakaywa Alay Sanibonwa. Meru Lang County. Oyakaywa P. Magure. Oyakaywa Anthony F. Williams. Oyakaywa Austin D. Taylor. Grand Kikmao County. Oyakaywa Bantu Masale. Oyakaywa Moame Josie. Oyakaywa Gose Soli Fekka. Bon County. Oyakaywa Frank E. Waynan. Oyakaywa James E. Coler. Oyakaywa Josiah Marvin Co. Oyakaywa Rava Flombo Wanda. Oyakaywa Uvi J. Corey. Oyakaywa Moema Bruce Meza. Oyakaywa Folé E. Famler. Nofakante. Oyakaywa Julie F. Wayan. Oyakaywa Mamancha Ba Koto. Oyakaywa Kisi Ke College. Oyakaywa Austin E. Tino. Nembaka County. Oyakaywa Samuel E. Brown Sunion. Oyakaywa Yanki Flombo. Oyakaywa Naga I. Gay. Oyakaywa Honest E. Mase Sunion. Oyakaywa Samuel D. Coca. Oyakaywa Domanti Gregia. Oyakaywa Musa Asang Belleti. Oyakaywa S. Mianan. Oyakaywa T. Z. Homwe. Grand Gila County. Oyakaywa Jeremiah D. Sokant Sunion. Oyakaywa Maru D. Johnson. Oyakaywa Gose D. V. Second. Bomen County. Oyakaywa Kapaka U. Di Dya Bani. Oyakaywa Maap B. Bisho E. Gansi Torian. Oyakaywa Saint P. Jala. Maghribi County. Oyakaywa Ronay U. P. Cooper. Oyakaywa Awak E. Young. Oyakaywa Alay A. Adon Red. Oyakaywa Imanye Yaa. Oyakaywa Karen G. Ga. Remasas County. Oyakaywa Alay T. Grant. Oyakaywa C. T. Qua. Grand Blue County. Oyakaywa Montanio and Bauras Sunion. Oyakaywa G. County. Oyakaywa Elizala Four. Oyakaywa Ace E. Kloplo Go. Oyakaywa Johnson S. and Bolan Sunion. Babu Lu County. Oyakaywa Zina A. Nomah. Oyakaywa Nutu O. S. Polis. And Oyakaywa Mostafa Warriton. Honourable Deputy Speakers, Presiding Officers. Honourable Members of the Honorable House of Representatives. There are forty-one Honourable Members present. Thirty-eight absent, two Honourable Members unseen. Thank you very much.
So the Majority Block have forty-one attendees to absent.
Reading the correction of the absence of the attendance.
Agenda. So we come to your live from the Chymas. The Honorable House of Representatives.
The 98th of the 10th quarter of the first section of the Honorable House of Representatives from the 55th best nation of the Republic of Liberia. Thursday, November 14, 2024 Agenda. One section called to order. Two prayer. Three roll call. Four reading corrections or amendment and adoption of the agenda. Five call for petition. Six call for special committee report. Seven call for standing committee report. Eight call for bills, motions and resolution. Now business on speakers desk. On that, we have A. Communications from Honourable Anthony F. Williams. Representative Eletra District Number Two, Mirilak County. One, requesting the House to invite the Minister of Public Works to explain and give an account of how the US22 million which was allocated in the 2024 National Budget was spent. And two, requesting the indulgence of the Plenary to invite Madame Sarah Bessu Yanti, Minister of Foreign Affairs of Liberia to present any plans and modality from the Ministry of Foreign Affairs relative to the establishment of a Liberian diplomatic nation in Rwanda. B. Communication from Honourable Axel B. Joktewo. Representative Eletra District Number Two, Reva G. County. Requesting the Plenary of the Honourable House to summon the Ministers of Internal Affairs and Partners and Development Planning on the issue of payment or payment of local government appointees. C. Communication from Honourable John One Twan Liggia. Representative Eletra District Number Six, Nima County. Requesting and assuise from section to the ever-meet attempt the international road for performance contracts executive seminars taken for November 11 to 2024 in Washington DC, USA. D. Appearance of the Ekwas Palmetre Delegation. E. Appearance of Honourable Josiah Marvin Co. Honourable E. W. Patefomo. Oyakaywa Fransa Foco. Honourable Eugene J. M. Corey. Honourable Abu Bana Kamara. And Honourable Zina Nomah. For allegedly endorsing in acts that are repartner to the status of our Members of the House. F. Appearance of Honourable J. Marvin Co. And the Personnel Director of the Honourable House of Representatives. G. Appearance of the Executive Director of Rural and Renewable Energy Agencies to provide comprehensive briefing on the electrification of rural communities across Liberia and the sources of funding. Ten miscellaneous, eleven adjournments. Honourable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen. That is the reading of the draft agenda for today's business day and night sitting. Thank you, sir.
The distinguished members of the meeting have been there. Our members have given a very pleasant honourable Austin Taylor. Honourable Austin Taylor.
Our most respected Honourable Deputy Speaker. Honourable distinguished Co-Presiding. My Honourable colleagues. Having listened to the agenda nicely read by the Deputy Chief Clerk. I, Austin D. Taylor of Palway, Maghribi District, Mirilak County. Move that this agenda nicely read be adopted and used for our day's deliberation. And subsequently, five after today's meeting, as soon.
Austin Taylor.
The speakers showing with the motion please second that are you ready to vote?
Already.
Already, Honourable. Friends. Master.
Mister Deputy Speaker. And Honourable Presiding, Co-Presiding. Hello, colleagues. My honourable members, has to do with during the past the eighth day sitting last Tuesday. We received a communication from the Director of Battles Artists. Asking us to excuse him to be present today. So I will be ready to vote if that can be also included on the agenda. I'm asking you then.
The joint of this Plenary. Our Thomas P. Fala. And Presiding Officer. The Co-Presiding the right Honourable Clarence G. Ga of District Number Five. Maghribi County. Distinguished colleagues. To the movement. I will be ready to vote for the adoption of this agenda. If you can accept the amendment for the communication from Honourable Saint P. Jala of Bomi County. Asking for an excuse due to medical reasons can be placed on this agenda. To my recruitites, Honourable from one county. I salute your sense. Could you vote?
Honourable Deputy Speaker. Honourable Deputy Speaker and Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding, distinguished colleagues. I will be ready to vote, uh, if the happen regarding the appearance of the head of the Renewable Energy. Can be taken because last sitting there was a communication sent that asked, uh, that gave an excuse and then they gave time for his appearance. So trying to still be on this list agenda, not uh, I think, uh, we will be taking much of our ultra.
He wants to like. Requested to appear today. And so a letter to that affair was done and as far as we know, he is here.
Okay. Thank you. So since he's here with that information being reliable. Uh, I will also call for this amendment. Where his appearance can be fast-hat and shifted to be one of the first patterns on the agenda to the movement. So we can play to A.
To my distinguished Honourable from Nembaka County. Uh, I have considered that your amendment is extremely acceptable. And in place, so I do. I do as well. Thank you very much. Distinguished members, we all have been in a soft time. Are you ready to vote? Already, Honourable. The Honourable Presiding, Co-Presiding. Distinguished colleagues. To the movement, I will be ready to vote. Will you to include my letter to expel the Ekwas delegation? Because they are compromised with Senator. Do you want to see that, Honourable? I wish, I wish we leave that to the who is, they do. They are very serious, they are very serious about Presiding. Honourable Presiding, Honourable Co-Presiding. I think we should have more. The movement address are right. And as I say, Honourable, with due respect to the people of one county. And respectfully reject. Honourable Presiding. Honourable Presiding, Honourable Co-Presiding, distinguished colleagues. Are we ready to vote? If we can include the name of Honourable Alex Sonoban Noir. On the, among those as we have Peter Alves, who appeared before in the party today. He was previously as those are my kills, so John asked for investigation, but he needs to be admitted. So want to make clarity that Alex Sonoban Noir needs to be turned back to this, or proceed. So need to in respect to the fact that Honourable Noah's name was previously filed with, I assume, as well. Honourable, we fall, Honourable, inter the path.
Thank you very much. Honourable Deputy Speaker. Honourable Speaker, Deputy Speaker who preside uh, to the movement. I'll be ready to vote when we, when you can accept this simple amendment. The appearance number D of the appearance of, of the Ekwas Parliament be brought to D and D go down to D. Thank you very much.
Tonight, tonight. To my High to our highly respected Honourable. So please confirm.
Information.
Information.
Information. That Honourable Presiding, joint Honourable Thomas Fala, Co-Presiding, distinguished colleagues. In the communication from Ekwas sent to us. Is clearly stated in that communication that they were here from 11 to 12. So looking at the time, we still intend I think that we can proceed as a general is when the camp by 11 to 12 is not specified.
Are you speaking to previous communication?
The most recent communication that informing all of the time will be here. It says from 11 to 12.
Can you confirm now?
Let me tell you, sorry, let me tell you. Communication written to the head of the Ekwas delegation state 10 AM. That's what we communicated them.
Have you responded to the back of the question?
No.
Have you responded to the back of the question?
We have not received, Ellen respond, I try to contact, eh, recipient.
So call it, or return. The agenda, I think it should be. So, so to the, to the uh, I, I, I wish, I wish that we, we make a reservation to the fact that Ekwas are here. And that when they appear that we can get them to have the dispensation to, to make their presentation. So, Father. If people should decide. With all of their members, are you ready to vote?
Ready.
Already, Honourable, something beautiful.
Honourable Deputy Speaker. Co-Presiding, distinguished colleagues to the movement. Considering that we got four appearances. I'll be ready to vote when you to consider that all of these, all of these appearances. Be captured under EA descending order while we move on with the other agenda.
To my to my honourable distinguished colleagues. And the brothers and brothers. Who have come a long way together. I really appreciate the fact that you, you have attempted to make an amendment to this agenda. But I will respectfully, honourably, fondly, duly regent. Distinguished colleagues, we have the final rejection, are you ready to vote? All those who are motion here. Motion here. Call for petition.
Motion.
There is no petition, Honourable Presiding Officer.
So DMU, um television coming to the live from the John Chymas. The Honourable House of Representatives, where majority block holding session.
Yes, the appearance of the Executive Director of Rua and Renewable Energy Agency after motion.
They are expecting the appearance of the Executive Director of the Renewable Energy to be here. So keep watching, DMU, son on television. The name is George Cooper. Coming to you live from the John Chymas of the Honourable House of Representatives, where majority block are holding session currently as we speak. A session is being presided over by Deputy Speaker Thomas Fala and Co-Presided by Clarence Khan, District Five Representative, Madiwi County. So keep watching, the majority block today in session, they are forty-one, two person, two lawmaker absent and the number is today forty-one with two absence. So um with the number forty-one, they obviously they can, they can have section because they have coronavirus. So um just. His Presiding Officers is Representative Thomas Fala, District Number One, Lofa County. They are also expecting the EWA's dedication to meet within this morning in the John Chymas of the House of Representatives. So keep watching, keep sharing the life. As we bring you live courage from the John Chymas of the Honourable House of Representatives, where majority block are having session.
Honourable Paris Gav, Presiding Officer, Honourable House of Representatives.
So the Executive Director of the Renewable Energy, so already see him.
Request of the appearance of the Executive Dir- Director of the Rural Renewable Energy. Dear Honourable Presiding Officer, I wish you a compliment and credit the indulgence of the Honourable House of Representatives to request the appearance of the Executive Dir- Director of the Rural Renewable Energy Agency or his Deputy Mr. Steve Porter before Plenary Director by briefing on their programs and activities relative to their electrifying rural communities as well as sources of funding for these initiatives next week, Tuesday. Honourable Presiding Officer, it is my hope that this matter would be the needful. Thank for your cooperation sincerely, your Honourable Alexander Paul, Representative, Electric District Number One, Riba G County. On the basis of that, in such a best invite, because we receive an excuse. Please permit me to read your excuse.
We must follow the procedure of Honourable Deputy. When you have raised security in our session.
I acknowledge receipt of your communication data November four hundred twenty-four, which I receive on November six hundred twenty-four, inviting me to appear before the Joint Team of the last night on Tuesday, November four hundred twenty-four, to provide a comprehensive briefing on the electrification of rural communities across Liberia, including resources of funding as referenced in the communication from Honourable Alexander Paul, Representative of Electric District Number One, Riba G County. I wish to inform you that I am currently attending the seventh session of the International Solar Alliance Assembly in India and I'm scheduled to return to Liberia on November four hundred twenty-four. Due to my absence on the proposed date, I respectfully request that the Honourable House of Representatives grant an excuse and reschedule my appearance for the next Saturday on Thursday, November fourteen, twenty twenty-four. I appreciate your honourable sending and look forward to the opportunity to address the Honourable House regarding this VATA initiative with the highest regard, Samuel B. Nagu Junior, Executive Director. On the basis of that, Plenary my data asked that the excuse was granted and we should reschedule it for today and the invitation. Honourable Samuel B. Nagu Junior, Executive Director of Rua and Renewable Energy Agency, Nipo Street, Moro G, Liberia. Dear Honourable Samuel B. Nagu Junior, I present compliments and right by directive of the Honourable House of Representatives in session to acknowledge receipt of your letter updated November eight hundred twenty-four in which you requested that the Honourable House of Representatives grant an excuse and reschedule your appearance for the next Saturday on Thursday, November fourteen, twenty twenty-four. Honorable Executive Director, the Honourable members will have me inform you, your request is hereby granted and your appearance is rescheduled for Thursday, Eastern, November fourteen, twenty twenty-four at ten AM to address issues mentioned in the communication sent to you. Please accept sentiments of my highest esteem sincerely, Honourable Senior Chair, Adam Chipla. Honourable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen, those are the exchanges between the Executive Director and the House on the basis of which he is here this morning. Thank you, sir.
Samuel, please permit me to vote. Our Director, please introduce yourself first and now follow my call.
Thank you very much, Honourable Presiding, Co-Presiding, Members of the Electoral Legislature. My name is Samuel Boken Nagu Junior. I am the Executive Director of the Renewable Energy Agency. Uh I congratulate me is uh my colleague, Pakistan Lo, who is our Director of Programs. Of course, I give my executive assistance and labor. You are from.
Samuel, please permit me to vote. To the executive.
Please raise your right hand, use your left hand. Raise your right hand, call your name, you repeat after me. I.
I, Samuel Boken Nagu Junior.
Do so on this way. At the testimony I advocate. As it relates to the hearing. So you can also raise your hand, right hand, or your name you repeat after it. So with the vote, please. I.
I, Samuel Boken Nagu Junior.
Do so on this way. At the testimony I advocate. As it relates to this hearing. To be the truth and everybody truth. So help me God. Honourable Co-Presiding Officer, Majesty's Queen, Honourable Ladies, Intermens of the Honourable House of Representatives, the witnesses are here, they are qualified for today's session. Thank you very much.
Sergeant Arm.
We allow properness of the communication of our eldest court, result for three million and then we message to the executive. For the eldest point. Thank you.
Honourable Ellis Paul.
Honourable Presiding, Honourable Co-Presiding, Distinguished Colleagues. Uh my communication is clearly articulated. I want to know from this agency, the Rural Renewable Agency, Energy, Energy Agency, this all many institutions as responsible for the electrification of rural Liberia. I want to know their progress, their activities so far and also want to know their sources of funding. I want to know how those communities that qualify are invented, how they are qualified and how many communities or cities in our rural counties that have been electrified so far and what are the plans for other communities that haven't been affected. I want to say thank you and that is my communication, Distinguished Colleagues.
Thank you, Honourable Coalition, we are now, that the Honourable Executive Director will not take the status sorry, you will stay and consider here as our honourable representative chair in this discussion, including the venue we see. Thank you, my response.
Thank you, Honourable Presiding, Honourable Co-Presiding, Members of the legislature. It's a great honour to have the opportunity to appear here as is required by law to be able to respond to uh the concerns of the Honourable Representative of Riba G County, which uh he has the right to be able to know exactly what we are doing at the Rural Renewable Energy Agency. And so to proceed to that, it is important for us to be able to give some, lay some context in terms of who we are, our vision, our core values, our plans of action as we proceed forward. So as many of you will know that initially the uh the RREA was established first as a result of the executive order by uh former President Hillary Johnson, Saturday, January twenty-ten. And operated in that format until uh July fifteen, twenty fifteen, when the legislative passed into law an act creating the Rural Renewable Energy Agency. In terms of what we are set up to do, we are basically set up to facilitate and accelerate the economic transformation of rural Liberia by promoting the commercial development and supply of body energy services to rural areas of some emphasis on locally available renewable uh energy sources. Our vision is to become a primary target area for promoting renewable energy technologies and services in Liberia. Our mission is to facilitate and accelerate the economic transformation of rural Liberia, be promoting the commercial development and supply of body energy services to rural areas with emphasis on locally available renewable sources.
On. Coming in on a point of order, uh to the extent that I see the head of the RREA reading an official documentation. So I would have thought this document would have been circulated to members while we believe we can also follow you. There are copies, you can please share a copy of the document. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our core values basically is about quality, transparency, accountability of the value services we carry. At the RREA, we are a proponent of offering electricity in Liberia. Our actions parents are guided by the national electricity strategy. With the overarching objective to achieve universal electricity access in rural areas. The national energy share target for Liberia is at one point one million, potentially to one point one million households at the cost of US since on the next year. So that's generally. For offering electricity, our target is to create access to three hundred and twenty-six thousand households at a cost of two hundred and sixty million dollars. We've already been able to commit to get committed funding from our partners in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight million, but we still have a gap of about two years fifty-eight million. And we are committed to the development of at least one hundred and twenty-six thousand uh milligrams at a cost of one point six eight million dollars. We provide services to tier one solar development for about two hundred thousand households at a cost of thirty-eight million dollars. I want to go to our own projects, which is a matter of interest of uh the Honourable Representative from uh Riba G. Currently, we have a total of um six projects that are largely being funded by our partners. So in um rural Lofa County, we have the Liberia Renewable Energy Access Project. And I'll talk about them in detail later. Um in uh um Niba County, we have the Renewable Energy for Electrification Project. And across Liberia and several counties, we have the Liberia Electricity Sector Supporting Access Project. In Riba G, we have the Riba G Hydro Power Project. And then um we have um for the southeast of Liberia, we have the Great Electrification Program prioritizing southeast Liberia. And then we have an all home, all coming project which is the sub to the Liberia electricity uh access district project. So in terms of details, with the first project, which is the uh Diring App, we are committed to constructing two point five meter watt, uh beating up the power plant. Supply is four one point eight three watt easier power uh generators with uh previous storage facilities. We're also constructing um territory by point four K business network. And then at the end of the day, we should be able to have connections for ten year.
Yeah. You going to?
Yes. Honourable Deputy and Presiding, Co-Presiding, Distinguished Colleagues, I'm really troubled by the ED presentation. To have such a voluminous document in his possession to read to plenary. And we don't have access to it. I don't understand it. So even to name the six project across the country that will be looked at on paper to be read for us, Honourable Presiding, I think it is unfair. If you can provide, if you can allow me, while on my feet to provide way forward or is all.
Or. Any question? Well, it's important, it was also the point of interest in the status of those six projects. Where we are as it relates to those projects that have been implemented to bring us government to you as the Commonwealth Executive Director. And the purpose of the purpose of this benefit is a big
And every allow me, uh, Honourable Presiding. If you are lacking what I'm doing, I have wished that uh the process and procedure about it for us to us from the beginning, then we will exactly how to do it. But notwithstanding, notwithstanding.
But this stuff, it's just so rough.
Please.
If they have.
Well, um, okay. So it's it's it's.
You are sure the ED member are candidate? Or you are yeah, give us information to police?
Oh, no, correct.
I appreciate. I appreciate.
So, 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 so.
Thank you. Yeah.
I don't believe it's a chair.
So this is the news salon coming to you live from the John Chimas at the Honourable House of Representatives, uh, the appearance of the Executive Director of Rural Energy.
So that's, that's in no fun. So, um, in, in Neba County, on the, uh, building, building board, we are also committed to construct, um, an hour three megawatts, uh, hydro power plant, uh, to fifteen kilometer, three, thirty K B and push on there. To be able to connect about seven thousand, two, seven thousand connections for people in Neba and Confor. This project is being financed, uh, by the African Development and the Government of Liberia. For the Liberian Electricity Sector Supporting Access Project, uh, we are doing, um, one hundred percent solarization for lighting health centers. We are doing electrification in operating areas through tier-one to tier-three, uh, systems through our resource-based financing. And we are, we have completed the value installation of four hundred and sixty-eight solar grid lights. It is a core public and battery room in Zorozam.
Information for wherefore. Still not showing it, please. Wherefore. We will be talking of, uh, Sukan. In a special setting, Paragon is in fact, we will be talking on Sukan.
Jeremiah Sukan.
Honorable Presiding, Honorable Co-Presiding District Police. I want to beg, I want to provide information, and if the Presiding is reasonable, give me the opportunity to provide wherefore at the same time. The information is that the Rural Renewable Energy Agency is a very specialized agency. And it's very critical to enable another transformation of this country, especially in the energy sector. The complexity of this work, especially when imagine the weight of the climate change. I think the Director and Management needs sufficient time, need a body from the community that will work with them so that they will be able to prepare an update and comprehensive report that will be useful. With that, Honorable Presiding, if you will allow me in your own wisdom, authority of the capital, for me to perform a way of on this matter. Quinter, with that, given the importance of this entity, I move at this moment, the A can be seconded. That is specialized to be set up, work with the Rural Renewable Energy Agency, prepare the update, the comprehensive update, that will be able to address the concern, provide information, that will prepare the way for this body to effectively engage and understand the development that is grown out in our respective, uh, in our respective districts across the country. And I will move that the community is set up today, and within two weeks, a comprehensive report is, uh, distinguished management, uh, reappear, comprehensive report, if I can get a second.
With the motion there, seven of the District Police to have the Executive Director of what we, the Special Minister, will report to this party in two weeks, I agree with you. All those who favor the motion, please raise your hand.
Right.
The right hand. Okay.
Motion is, 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 is. To give more time to the, the energy to go back and prepare a comprehensive report to appear before Parliament in the next two weeks.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Most of the story, otherwise we will not say thank you so much for. In all your presentation, it is our hope that you will draw the reply and agree that it's going to be settled, so that we can have a resolution, and it's my, thank you so much. The committee members are as well. Our Johnson Williams Chairperson. Our Johnson Williams Chairman, our NS Marcy Co-Chair, our Anthony Williams Member, our Samuel Brown Member, our Julian F. Bill Member, our Saint T. P. Member, our Jeremiah Member, our Honorable Jeremiah Sukan. Member, thank you. Be so precious for our part. Thank you. If I still have this charge, thank you.
Wait, the case is not being discussed. Follow me, motion. To set up a specialized committee to prepare a comprehensive report here to the ballot in next two weeks. So he's now essaying the John Chimas. So keep watching. This is DN News Live on our television. The name of George Copan are coming to you live from the John Chimas of the House of Representatives. Where majority of the police session.
Honorable Presiding, Officer. Honorable Presiding, Officer, the St. Mary's, ladies and gentlemen, the appearances of police are invited. I think the same, that is the communication, their priorities with me. So the communication from, from Anthony Williams. This is our world here, Anthony.
Anthony Williams, Mereen County. This communication is being brought to the floor.
District Police. I write to pray the indulgence and to bring to all that attention of this office ballot with immediate effect to invite the Public Works Minister, Brother Lafayette Giddings, to explain and give an account of how the US twenty-two million which was allocated in the twenty twenty-four National Budget for the sole purpose of maintaining and rehabilitating the sacred place to Zwetru Corridor and the Zwetru to Kalogak Corridor was spent. Honorable General Speaker and District Police, it can be recalled that this office ballot threw a unanimous vote apportioned the amount mentioned supra in fulfillment and support for His Excellency Jose Yuma Bwaka's promise to the Lappinan people that within the period of hundred days, no car will be stuck in the mud, especially on national roads. It is from this backdrop that the Ministry of Public Works was giving the money for the art pavement of the corridors as mentioned here in. Fellow police, within less than two months of the rehabilitation of the corridors, while the Zwetru to Kalogak Corridor still remains private, it is reported that the sacred place to Zwetru Corridor is almost impossible. Our people are finding it very difficult to access the southeastern road due to the deplorability of the road. Our local farmers' produce are perishing, while the goods of prominent and eminent businessmen and women are gradually damaging on the highways due to the impossibility of the corridor. Honorable General Speaker and esteemed colleagues, while it is true that it is not in the purview of the legislature to spend public monies, but it is a part of this branch of government responsibility to have an oversight of how government ministers and agencies spend monies that are appropriated to them through the national budget. District Police, it is very proud from Minister Giddings to come to plenary and explain to this office ballot as to how the money was spent and which engineer company was offered routes to rehabilitate the corridor between Sacred Place and Zwetru. Thanks for your courteous consideration and support to doing the Liberia people's best, people's work. Honorable Anthony F. Williams, son, represented people Sodok and this day letter of this number two Mereen County. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, District Police, ladies and gentlemen, that is the remainder of the communication from your colleague, Honorable Anthony F. Williams. Thank you, sir.
Communication from Anthony Williams, Mereen County. Our kissing collins.
The Honourable Presiding, Honorable Co-Presiding District Police, I've been listening to the well-explanatory communication from my colleague, Honorable Anthony Williams, of Mereen County. I move, if I can attend a second, our Honourable Judge, maybe give me three to five minutes. Three to five minutes to expatiate all this communication with subsequent submission to the committee on Party Account, if I can attend a second.
With the motion being seconded, the Presiding will choose two minutes. We always getting our motion, District Police, are you ready to vote? All those who favor the colleagues trying to ask the sun, please bear your humble seat, yeah?
Yeah.
I give that chance.
Thank you, Honourable Deputy Speaker, Honorable Presiding, Co-Presiding District Police. Thank you very much, our Mereen County. I've been listening to the self-explanatory letter from my office. Mister Deputy Speaker, Honorable Co-Presiding District Police, you were agreeing that when we talked about in January, the President of the Republic of Liberia thought it was important that a role can take this in this country be addressed adequately. Having been present by some people around him, they thought it was important he should make that announcement. Hundred days, no car will reach. But today, as we speak, the road from Neba County to Bengile County, it is impossible for our people to get back to Mereen County or to the southeast county. Mister Speaker, Mister Co-Presiding District Police, I think I, the pronouncement by the President, it is embarrassing. It is embarrassing to all of us here because we took the personal pronouncement of our people that look by President Jose Yuma Bwaka. It's not concerned about rules, as they also indicated in his presentation, rule, 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 rule. But to all of us surprise, in twenty twenty-four, this November, to get to Mereen County, Mister Deputy Speaker, Co-Presiding District Police, you have spent four to five days on the road just to get to Mereen. It is alarming, it's very disappointing. So abroad, the communication before plenary, to take a decision so that our people, that in that, all of us here, will know that yesterday we are doing business with our people. And as I said, they check about which way, in voting. All that good. This is Presiding, Mister Speaker, this is the Presiding, Co-Presiding District Police. I pray the indulgence of this office ballot to invite the Minister of Public Works and his contacts so that they will be able to explain to the Lappinan people how that money will be spent on our road. As a prepared summary of the money, so he said, he did not, he did not spend that the entire two hundred and twenty-two million. He reduced over eighty, but up, up to now, we are not aware. So I strongly believe the committee should look at that period conscientiously so that our people can really feel the representation that we are here by that. Thank you very much.
This is Anthony Williams. Communication to have the Minister of Public Works to appear. If we take a very. To take a very good. Motion. Agreement. Communication have been accepted by plenary to invite the Minister of Public Work to appear before this ballot.
The second communication.
Second communication from Honorable Anthony Williams.
Honorable Thomas T. Fala, Presiding Officer and Deputy Speaker, Thirty-Fifth National Legislative House of Representatives, Capital Bureau, Republic of Liberia. Dear Honorable General Speaker and District Police, I extend my courteous regards and humbly request the indulgence of the plenary, of this plenary to invite Madasara Bessunyati, Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Liberia. The purpose is to present any plan and modality from the Ministry of Foreign Affairs relative to the establishment of a Liberian diplomatic mission in Rwanda. Honorable General Speaker and esteemed colleagues, the prolonged absence of such a mission has continuously created significant difficulties for Liberians residing in Rwanda, particularly for the Congress of Liberians Kingdom and other residents. It has been reported that Liberian citizens are facing considerable, considerable challenges in obtaining travel documents and accessing other essential, essential services. These challenges include, but are not limited to one, difficulty obtaining travel documents. Many Liberians in Rwanda are struggling to secure passports and other necessary travel documents, which hampers their ability to travel for education, work, or personal reasons. Two, limited access to consulate services. The absence of a diplomatic mission means that Liberians have, have limited access to consulate services, including legal assistance and support in emergencies. Three, educational and professional barriers. Liberian students in Rwanda face administrative hurdles that could be alleviated with the presence of a diplomatic mission, such as verification of academic credentials and facilitation of student studies. Four, community support and engagement. The establishment of a diplomatic mission will provide a focal point for community support and engagement, fostering a sense of security and belonging among Liberians in Rwanda. Fellow colleagues, reports coming in from our insider suggest that there are ten thousand to two thousand Liberians living in Rwanda, and this number continues to grow. Additionally, we have observed an influx of Liberians youth and students pursuing education in Rwanda. Given the importance of matinee close relation with our fellow African nations, we believe it is crucial to establish a genuine and robust diplomatic presence in Rwanda. Honorable General Speaker and District Police, the establishment of a Liberian diplomatic mission in Rwanda will significantly lighten these challenges, providing much needed support and services to our citizens. It will also strengthen the bilateral relations between Liberia and Rwanda, thus promoting mutual cooperation and development. Again, as I pray this plenary indulgence, I look forward. Again, as I agree, this Plenary indulgence, I look forward to the presence of the Honorable Minister to discuss this critical issue and to hear your insights and plans for addressing the needs of Liberians in Rwanda. Yours sincerely, Honorable Anthony F. Williams, Representative, Pibo Sorokan District, electoral district number two, Maryland County. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen, that is the reason of a communication from Honorable Williams. Thank you, sir.
Second communication from Anthony Williams, Maryland County, District, the material representatives. Calling for the appearance of the Minister of Foreign Affairs, Madasara Bessunyati, to talk about ambassador in Rwanda.
Distinguished colleagues, having arrived at this communication, knowing the nature of this communication in the interest of our international partners and the country as a whole, I would like to, if you'll attend a second, that a specialized committee be need established to go thoroughly into this and report to Plenary in, in two weeks.
Distinguished colleagues, motion, you are ready to vote.
Mister Presiding, Co-Presiding, colleagues, to the movement, concerning the crucial nature of the matter at hand, and perhaps their ongoing negotiations already has been done by the Minister of Foreign Affairs. It will be prudent enough that the Minister appear before this body, so I will be ready to vote for you to consider that the Minister of Foreign Affairs be made to appear before this body on Tuesday. I will be ready to vote.
It's a fraction by giving county representative. Calling for the appearance of the Minister of Foreign Affairs to this office body.
My brother, my dear brother, and uh. Veteran. I'd like to say here that you have explained well, and I don't think that this is against this process. I would accept that, I will accept because you know.
Communication from Honorable Asebe Tropilwo. Honorable Thomas T. Fala, Deputy Speaker, Presiding Officer in Section, Honorable House of Representatives, Fifty Fifth National Legislature, Liberia. November eighth, twenty twenty four. Dear Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, and same members of the Honorable House of Representatives, subject, request to summon Ministers of Internal Affairs and Finance Development Planning on payment issues for local government appointees. On behalf of the people of Riverji County, and in recognition of the legislative mandate to ensure fiscal accountability and the welfare of public servants, I write to respectfully solicit the indulgence of this honorable Plenary to summon the Minister of Internal Affairs, MRA, and the Minister of Finance and Development Planning, MOFDP. The significance behind this summon is to inquire and establish the prevailing reasons behind the non-payment of majority of the presidential appointees at the local government level ever since they are appointed. They are appointed. Specifically, the Stagital District Superintendent, Stagital District Revenue Officer, District Commissioner, District Inspector, Township Commissioners, and City Mayors across Riverji and all counties. The delay in compensating these employees has subjected them to serious economic hardship, contravening their right to timely remuneration and weakening their ability to effectively execute their responsibility in service to the people. We trust that the Honorable Ministers appearing before this body will enable us to assess the financial gap or challenges and adopt viable solutions to mitigate these pressing issues affecting the welfare of our local government personnel. In a spirit of our commitment to diligent public service and the well-being of all public servants, I respectfully ask this honorable Plenary to grant this request. Thank you for your calm consideration respectfully, yours, Honorable Asebe Tropilwo, representing District Number Two, Riverji County. Mister Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen, that is the reason of a communication from your colleague, Honorable Asebe Tropilwo. Thank you, sir.
Honorable Mark of Thomas, District Four Representative, Marcella County.
This is the Presiding, Co-Presiding, fellow colleagues, I think you have already, uh, gave us, they, they, they wrote mark to the motion. So we want to move, uh, this is the Presiding, that a proponent of this communication be given at the two minutes to give an insight into the communication, and this letter be referred to the committee already set up, especially as the committee, if I may, I'm taking it several.
The motion is being suffered at this table, colleagues, the chair, nothing is for you. Twenty minutes, Honorable Asebo.
Honorable Asebo.
Honorable Presiding, Honorable Co-Presiding, distinguished colleagues, I be greatly fascinated to be given this a dozen day to replay the spark on the communication just right. Distinguished colleagues, Riverji is raising the flag, but this issue is now unique to Riverji County. Many of you here from your district receive progress of all every week concerning local government officials not being paid. And this started back almost five, six years ago, and that was little, little increase after the exception of this government. Since the government came to be, those local, local government officials are giving great notes and now receive their pay. And as, as in the ceremony, the communication that is honor marking their authority as local government officials. As I'm speaking, local government officials are not even able to feed their homes, not to talk about paying their school, their school fees. So therefore, I'm asking the Honorable by the, by the letter being sent to the committee as proposed, so that the Minister of Internal Affairs, and Minister of Finance, Minister of Finance will explain to us the reason behind local government officials not being paid as a subject.
With the submission, distinguished colleagues, without test, the motion, all those who pay for the motion, please begin with us here. Against motion is just the last.
Communication from Honorable Darwin T. Glickia. Honorable Thomas Fala, Deputy Speaker and Presiding Officer, Fifty Fifth National Legislature, House of Representatives, capital bureau, capital bureau, Liberia. Dear Honorable Presiding, I present compliments and wish to request an excuse from section to enable me to attend the International Roadform Performance Days Contract Executive Seminar scheduled for November eleventh to twenty 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 four in Washington DC USA. The seminar is expected to bring together more than one hundred and eighteen contracts to discuss annual performance and progress of the RRF in an effort to provide world-class knowledge resources, resources and advocacy services and continuous education programs which together offer a global marketplace for best practices and solutions. Then, thanks for your understanding, as we look forward to rejoining you soon. Carried out, Honorable Darwin T. Glickia, representing Electoral District Number Six, Nima County. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen, that is the reason of a communication from your colleague, Honorable Glickia.
Can we look back at which our colleague, well, representing our country, the best excuse letter for our self-charge.
Honorable Thomas T. Fala, Deputy Speaker and Presiding Officer, capital bureau, Republic of Liberia. Dear Honorable Presiding Officer, we present, with, with compliments, I write to inform you that I will be away from all legislative activities due to illness starting today, November fourteen, twenty twenty four, to honor your treatment. Thanks for their attention and may all mighty Allah, God bless us all. Best regards, Sampee Jar, representing District Number Three, Bomey County. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen, that is the reason of communication. Also, in similar manner, we note it, which our colleague, well, as he go through his treatment. Last, another letter of excuse from Honorable One Way. Dear Honorable Deputy Speaker and Presiding, reference.
Did he give the rubber?
Yeah.
Is he in chief?
Please accept my sincere compliments, Honorable Deputy Speaker and distinguished colleagues. This is to duly inform this office body that I am due abroad for my routine medical checkups. Honorable Presiding and distinguished colleagues, it is my iron hope and prayer to rejoin you in this sacred chamber to continue the Liberian, Liberian people's business in concert with our core legislative prerogatives of lawmaking, representation, and oversight. With due courtesy, I will submit with assurances of my highest esteem, sincerely, yours, Honorable Rafo Flomo Wamba, Representative, Electoral District Number Four, Bome County. Mister Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen, that is another excuse from Honorable One Way.